Yeah, it was today. It was a big one.
It's only one minute early.
What's that?
It's only one minute early.
Listen, I follow the rules. I know our viewers at home are counting on us.
I know.
Good evening, we're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Bath Charter Township Board of Trustees meeting for Monday, June 17th. Happy to see you all in the audience, happy to know folks are watching us at home. Let's start out with the roll call.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
I'm here.
Ms. Butler-Challenger here, Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Hagerman?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
Really bounced around on that one. Next up on the agenda, and if you're looking for agendas, I believe they're up on the lectern, along with the handouts we'll refer to tonight. Next up is number two civic reflection, we'll do the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, so please, if you're able, join us by standing up for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now a moment of silence. Thank you. Next up on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have not heard from anyone that we need to move anything around from staff or board members, is that still the case? All right, then I entertain a motion to approve as issued.
I make a motion to approve as issued.
I'll support it. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote, all those in favor of approving the, excuse me, approving the agenda as provided tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Number four is disclosure of conflicts of interest, board members, do we have any conflicts we need disclosed tonight?
I will again disclose that I'm on the Bath School Museum Committee.
Thank you.
It's on the agenda for today.
Anything else? All right. That brings us to public statement number one, which is five on the agenda. This is a time when the public in the audience can come up to the lectern and for up to three minutes, share your thoughts on any of the items on the agenda today. There will be a second time at the end of the meeting if you want to say anything you'd like about any issue, but this first three minutes is just for those topics that pertain to the agenda tonight.
I was just going to speak to the roads, the signage, I didn't know if you would want me to come up during that time or if you'd like me to speak to it now.
Yeah, we'll invite you up during that time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, my name is Brennan Fox, I'm with Dimaxine Development. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the township staff for all their hard work and dedication on the Norm Fasteners Project. They've been a joy to work with and we appreciate their timeliness and all their collaboration with us through this process. As always also, I just wanted to extend an invitation to any member of the board or member of the public, if they have any questions or concerns at all, our team is more than happy to meet with them and address any. So, thank you.
Thank you Brennan, that's a good time to remind folks that the township has a webpage set up for this project as well with frequently asked questions, if you'd like to check that out too. Anybody else want to address the board? All right. Next up is items from county, state, federal, and other agencies, I do not see any of those agencies in the audience now. Karen, were you expecting anybody tonight?
I was not, thank you.
Great, we'll keep trucking then, that brings us to the consent agenda. The only thing on the consent agenda today is the minutes of the planning commission from May 28th.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, because it's a consent agenda, we don't have discussion, so we'll take a voice vote on this. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the approval of minutes, we have the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting from June 3rd, 2024.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted from June 3rd, 2024's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the minutes? All right, hearing none, we'll take another voice vote, all those in favor of approving the minutes as provided for June 3rd tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our minutes stand approved. That brings us to the approval of vouchers tonight. How do you want to handle that, board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as submitted.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the vouchers presented to us tonight, is there any discussion or questions from the board? Don't forget to sign the paperwork out on the counter. Let's do a roll call vote.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, motion carries, the vouchers are approved. We do not have a treasures report tonight, as you can see from the agenda, the next quarterly investment report will be on July 15th. That brings us to committee appointments. Tonight, board members, I have two committee appointments to present to you, we have two vacancies on the police and fire board, so I present to you Monty Small, who's been a member, I think, for 25-plus years, and Britt Weber. Both of those gentlemen will be with a term ending December 31st, 2026. We have Britt in the audience today. If you have any questions for him, he can join us, otherwise, the wave will do.
Would you prefer these individually or together, does it matter?
I think we should do it together.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve those committee appointments then.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Monty Small and Britt Weber to the police and fire board, is there any other discussion on these gentlemen? All right, we'll do a voice vote, all those in favor of approving these two gentlemen tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well thank you Mr. Small and Mr. Weber for volunteering your time to the township. There's no township committee reports tonight, and that brings us to unfinished business, number 13, if you're following along. Large A is items for introduction and discussion, and we have Park Lake Road and Eunice Street signs from the Clinton County Road Commission, our superintendent's on the list, but we also have a member of our road committee ready to speak. Do you want to take that Karen, or you want George to start us out?
I can start us out. At the last meeting, there was a great deal of discussion over Eunice Street, no right turn sign, and a Park Lake Road, change of signs indicating that there was a beach ahead. At that time, Mr. Baker, who was the chair of the road committee here in Bath Township, had indicated we were awaiting written confirmation from the Clinton County Road Commission as to their stance on both of these signs, and they have provided that. I apologize for not including the signed letters to you, I do have those if anybody's interested, but no content has changed, there's just an electronic signature there, the letters remain the same. So, if there are questions, or you would like to hear from Mr. Baker, we could do so at this point.
Anything from board members? It felt to me like this was a bit of a compromise, the no signs but the crosswalks, which hopefully will be better deterrents than the signs?
I think it made sense to me when I understood the reasoning and what needed to be the result of a sign. I think that was probably a common misconception for a lot of people, but that, those signs are not recognized by the Michigan Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, therefore, they would recommend they not be installed, because they need to indicate an action, or what is ahead in order for the driver to react, or what direction they should take from that sign. So, it made a lot of sense in, for different reasons in both instances, so I do think the letters were helpful and informative.
All right. There's no questions or other thoughts, we'll keep moving. All right, that brings us to 13 large B items for action. First up is the Board of Water and Light property transfer of interest by the township, and we have Chris Patterson here to walk us through what feels like an overly complex thing.
Yeah, good evening board, I appreciate that. So, it's interesting in that the township actually has already met and conceived on this issue twice, and has actually taken action on it. Ultimately, it's a little bit of backdrop, we did some analysis at the direction of the superintendent, maybe a year or two ago now, to look at what was an original agreement in 1998 and in 99 related to BWL taking over the township's water infrastructure. There were interests that were left over in that agreement, there was a contingency, and at the end, it was indicated that we were to do a quitclaim deed, or some type of transfer of interest into actual real property where those wells are located, and there would be a bill of sale related to any items that would not be considered fixtures of the real estate. We came to the board previously in '23, at that time BWL was doing due diligence on the file and got together and wanted to complete the transfer. So, we had verified that all of the other conditions in the '98 and in the '99 supplemental agreement had been satisfied, and that it did appear it was appropriate for the township to then convey those interests. And so, the township has already previously, the board did authorize by motion vote to transfer those by quitclaim to BWL, and I'll just give you the property interest for those in it, it's 650 Coleman Road, 63047 Timberview, 16670 Austin Way, 16893 Cedar Brook. And then what happened in the meantime, after authorization, we had asked BWL to prepare the paperwork, in that process, they actually were looking to get those assets, then transfer them as part of a purchase to the East Lansing Meridian Sewer Authority. So, in the process of waiting for instruments from BWL, they contacted us maybe three months, four months ago, it's been kind of slow, but they contacted us and asked if the board would have any issue with transferring to Elmsa, and we said, we don't know, we don't have any authority to do that unless we go back to the board, so we would know, need to know, one, does East Lansing Meridian Sewer Authority stand in the shoes of BWL, and that we have an agreement that would indicate that, and then of course, we'd have to go back to the board, the original approval was a transfer to BWL. So, they decided after some weeks, they did want us to come and ask the board that. So, obviously, you've already given direction on it, you have authorized, of course, the supervisor to execute those quitclaims, we've not done that, it'd be a quitclaim deeds and assignments of some easement interests, waiting for further direction, and now their indication that they would like it to be transferred directly to East Lansing Meridian Sewer Authority. There's, the things that are in the packet that are interesting to look at, not only the background minutes, but the technical MOU that they have is not yet a transfer, so I just want to point that out to the extent that the board takes action to authorize something that it sort of previously did, but with the twist of now transferring to the East Lansing Meridian Sewer Authority. The MOU actually indicates, it's like due diligence by that authority to inspect the wells and determine whether they will purchase. So, we don't currently have, they're still finalizing a purchase agreement, they want to know that the township will allow it to go directly to Elmsa, then they have to go back to both their authority boards and get actual approval. So, the basic would be a similar motion that was made previously, if this board is okay with it, but we do need proof, of course, that this authority would be standing in the shoes of BWL. So, for purposes of coming tonight, since I was already coming, I told them I would bring it, but any motion would be conditioned upon them showing the supervisor and the superintendent a satisfactory purchase agreement, that we actually know BWL has relinquished their title and transferred it also to the authority. So, it's six instruments ultimately, that were authorized previously by this board to go to BWL, it was quitclaim deed, easement assignments, and then a bill of sale. Those same documents actually would have to be executed, we never did sign them and deliver them, it's just that now, in replace of BWL, it would indicate East Lansing Meridian Sewer Authority. We did put the same chart that we had developed before, for you to know where the properties are and the instruments for which you have that title. We're not making any representations as to the title, that's why we're saying it's a quitclaim assignment, so we're just transferring whatever interest we have to them. And then, we would just change the names of the purchaser, and we would be waiting for them to show satisfactory proof that the authority has it. I did also, to the extent that you don't have any questions, prepared a proposed motion that's very consistent with the previous motion, although obviously, instead transferring to the East Lansing Meridian Sewer Authority, and in addition to that, we do want to get that condition in there, that they give us actual proof beyond just an MOU that they have purchased those rights from BWL before we transfer. Any other questions, concerns, or thoughts? And certainly, if the board desires to just transfer to BWL, you took that action, and then we would just go back to them and tell them that we can execute instruments to BWL, and then otherwise, they can transfer among themselves.
So, in that case, would Elmsa be purchasing from BWL?
Correct. In either instance, they're purchasing from BWL, what the paperwork that we're waiting to get is, it would be a purchase agreement, some type of transfer agreement between the two of them, but the agreement clearly indicates that BWL has a sold and signed its interest in these six documents that we're supposed to convey to BWL, that they've been conveyed to East Lansing Meridian Sewer Authority.
And they're not purchasing from us, because whatever happened in '98, '99 gave that away, we just never have secured it on.
Correct. Yeah, the first thing that I had indicated to them is that, you know, the reason we don't really want a particular agreement directly with the new authority is, we just don't want to renegotiate and rehash whatever representations or warranties were made in the '98 or the '99. So, our position was, you just accept them as we would transfer them, and if you want us to change the signee, because you think that's extra paperwork that you don't want to do, that we can do it. What I think you're ultimately providing them is probably a convenience, it's one less step for them, other than that, obviously, this can be done with just two transfers instead of one. We could still transfer to BWL, and then whenever they complete their agreements, they would transfer to the authority.
What is the authority doing with them?
So, I asked that question, and I think it's a good one, they indicated, and they're able to purchase the assets regardless. Apparently, they do need two wells for purposes of capacity related to meeting a threshold for grants. So, I guess it provides them sufficient capacity that there's a grant threshold for which they were applying. Now, obviously, they would own them, so they could technically do as they so desire under the '98 and the '99 agreement, but that was one of the, I had asked that same question, that was the particular feedback that I had received from legal counsel of BWL and legal counsel of the authority.
Are they functioning?
There are, there are some of them that are inspected that do exist, yeah.
So, like, are folks down who are being serviced by BWL, will still be serviced by BWL?
Oh, no, I actually, that's a good question, my understanding of BWL is, I don't know that they actually are using the wells for production, but I would be speaking a little bit out of the knowledge that I had with them, because that was something that we had developed two or three years ago to understand, I don't know that, I didn't look at that for purposes of this transfer today, but...
I can't imagine they're cutting service off of them.
Oh, yeah, correct, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Other questions? Would you like to share your...
Yeah, the motion is very consistent with the previous one in the minutes, so it is going to sound long as I read it orally, I guess, but, motion for the supervisor and/or superintendent to execute and issue quitclaim deeds and easement assignments to the East Lansing Meridian Sewer Authority for the township's interest in properties, and then I listed them, 6347 Timberview, 16670 Austin Way, 16893 Cedar Brook, and 6050 Coleman Road, conditioned upon BWL presenting a final executed agreement demonstrating Elmsa's interest in BWL's wells.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How do folks feel, is this, do we want to keep with, keep dancing with BWL, or do we want to do-si-do over to Elmsa?
Personally, I'd, I'd just like to keep, keep on with the original agreement we made with BWL, let them make any further agreements they want to, and take us out of it, I'm sure it smoothes the road for them, but it's, that's pretty much all it does. But I'm just one person, the board can do it however they want.
Does this not take us out of it?
Even if we sell it to Elmsa?
What I understand is we would then be renegotiating some of the...
No, no renegotiation. It does take us out of it, and we're only offering them with quitclaims, which means we're making no warranties or representations as to the instruments that we're transferring, particularly because, as we've discussed with them, if you look at the way that some of the property was held, it's referenced in master deeds, but it's not particularly called out in some aspects, so it's not clear whether it's in the common areas or not. So, there are issues for which we would not want to make any representations or warranties beyond that '98 and '99 agreement. So, that's why the position that we've taken is, you're not purchasing then from the township, if you want to stand in the shoes of BWL and show us a document that you're in their position, and we would transfer them at the same right title and representation, then we're happy to do so, but otherwise, we're not making any additional reps or guarantees. And there wouldn't be any additional documents for the township board to negotiate or approve from the East Lansing Meridian Sewer Authority. Instead, we're basically like agreeing to do an assignment, no different than if you had a vendor contract and someone buys that vendor, and instead of dealing with ABC, you're dealing with CBA company, it's that same type of idea, they're basically standing in the shoes of that contract.
Did that answer your question?
I think so.
If we were to decide not to move forward with Elmsa, but keep it going with BWL, do we need to take any action tonight?
No.
Okay.
No, then I would go back and tell them that the board was more comfortable executing the instruments and finalizing them as they originally approved to BWL, and please get us the form in which you want them, and we will get them signed by the supervisor and get them sent over to you.
Okay. So, it's either action to move it to the sewer authority, or we let it be and keep it with BWL?
Who will then move it to the sewer authority?
Yes.
Would there be any negative consequence to us acting or not acting?
Do you have recommendations?
Yeah, I mean, they, so I did ask them that, they didn't indicate any particular financial constraint or impact that would be a consequence to them, my understanding is that procedurally, it's easier for them because of the approvals they have in place, but they never got the instruments approved to transfer. So, it sounds like with whatever process they have procedurally, like it's typical with townships, you're just a very efficient form of government, so I think you're probably able to execute it easier than they are, and it sounds like it's just, it's an administrative burden for which you would remove from them.
No one has ever called us an efficient means of government before.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, we'll take...
You're welcome. Thomas Jefferson agrees, so...
I can tell you got something on your mind.
No, I still stand with my original sense of it, you know, efficient in the sense that we got that to them, when was the first time?
Um, wait, was it May of...
Yeah.
Yeah, May 15th of 2023, so, I'm not making a recommendation on it, the reason that we sort of rushed it to package it here is that I had to come here for this other thing that's on your agenda, so I told Karen, I just said, it seems most efficient if we're going to do this, since I worked on this thing two years ago, that we bring it tonight, but I don't have, I'm not beholden one way or the other, whatever the board tells us is what we will report back.
But if we do this, I mean, we already made the motion a year ago, the Board of Water and Light did nothing, so is there a way we can make the quitclaim deeds go through faster, or are we going to still be waiting for them to do something?
We can, it's a cost component, so under the '98 and '99 agreement, we already spent a lot of time going through the township's archives and art archives, putting together, there were various conditions in those agreements, and they were so old, nobody had it in a nice fine packet, so they did a closing, and then there were pieces that had to be worked out, there was still bond indebtedness that had to be confirmed, paid off, et cetera. So, we had invested a lot of effort in sort of complying with our obligations to be prepared to transfer, so once we had satisfied that, and the board had made its motion, we had asked that BWL pick up and draft the instruments of conveyance for us to review, and it just never really got put together.
So, for efficiency, it would be easier to go to East Lansing Meridian?
Well, no, I guess what I'm saying is, if you want it to be done, we'd be happy to just draft the quitclaim deed forms, have them signed and sent over. We didn't do the last sort of step, because we were...
At our cost, though, when it should have been on their cost.
The agreement's not clear as to who pays for what part of the conveyance cost, but I guess we were just trying to be sort of appropriately frugal with expenses, so by the time you had spent the money that you had invested in putting this all together to comply with your obligations to transfer, we were sort of looking for them to just prepare that last piece so we could get it passed on. But we could easily draft the rest of them, I mean, you have forms in front of you, we just need to finalize four of those documents, two of them are together, four of them need to be verified, and then they could be signed and sent to them.
Well, folks, I would ask for a motion if someone wants to put that forward, or if not, I guess we'll stick with BWL and keep the meeting moving.
I really think we should just go to East Lansing Meridian and be done with it, because they've already signed these forms that are in here.
Yeah, they did execute the MOU, we have...
Back in '23.
Half of the forms actually BWL already did put together for East Lansing Meridian Sewer Authority to take it, so...
Yeah.
I did, Lindsay Dangle is the authorities' counsel, so we've been talking to both her, and then Ellen Kleiman is actually the authority for BWL. Lindsay's also prepared to sort of move this forward and get it finalized, and get those, accept those instruments, so...
In the interest of efficiency, then, I will make a motion to support the BWL property transfer of interest by Bath Charter Township as outlined.
Might you be willing to make the motion that you...
Do you want me to read the motion, and you can make this motion?
Oh, yeah, do it.
I don't want to bully you into a motion, but...
Make sure it's correct.
Okay, so that motion was for the supervisor with assistance of the superintendent to execute and issue quitclaim deeds and easement assignments to Elmsa for the township's interest in properties at 6347 Timberview, 16670 Austin Way, 16893 Cedar Brook, and 6050 Coleman Road, conditioned upon BWL presenting a final executed agreement showing Elmsa's purchase of BWL's interest.
That's what I heard you say?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, is there any other conversation about this issue? What a weird old issue.
I know.
This sounds like a roll call vote to me, how do you feel about it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if we, Chris, if we do it this way, it will be clean, I mean, there will be questions from the '98 to the '23 to the '24?
No, that... Wow, I obviously was not speaking in that before. There will not be any issues, as long as we have that document that says that Elmsa has purchased BWL's interest in the '99 agreement. So, then if you were in the future to look through your records, you'd see the '98 agreement, the '99 agreement, you'd obviously see the May 2023 motion, but then later, you'd find this motion, and then hopefully, the document that indicates that Elmsa is standing in the shoes of BWL, and then plus the signed executed six instruments transferring, so I think you're going to have a pretty clean record.
Do you think that they're going to whack on signing the paperwork this time if we do pass this motion?
No.
Okay.
So, it's all the way back from the...
One other thing I just thought of, that I believe my understanding in talking to Mrs. Dangle for the authority is that they're actually more interested in getting this done than I think maybe BWL was, because not only does it relate to grants, but they have done well, they have the well inspections and some contractors that are trying to get out there and finish some, some type of due diligence, so they're pretty interested, they wanted this done several months ago. So, they're the ones that have sort of pushed this forward to try to get this done.
Any other questions? Followed up to that comment?
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion carries. Next up on our agenda is for the board to enter closed session under the Open Meetings Act permissible purposes, letter H, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute for a legal opinion related to the Norm Fasteners Project. If such action will come from that closed session, there is an item immediately followed, and we'll take that action in public session. Would someone like to make a motion to send us into closed session?
I'll support it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All right, we'll take a voice vote, all those in favor going into...
Roll call.
For closed session.
You led me astray.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
All right, stay tuned, team will be back. All right, stay tuned, team will be back.
Shoot. About to shoot it from center.
I just wanted to know.
Oh, okay.
One of my good friends.
She didn't have a stand. And she's got a job. She's got a job. Which I guess is the part of Florida.
I think this is, yeah, California. And it's far.
I don't mind living in the city.
It's nice.
So dry in this weather.
Is that something sampled about?
Yeah.
I don't buy those. I don't have four.
Spring will leave me.
I care, it's way too late.
See, I told you, you were taking.
Thieves, thieves.
All right, I'm going to recall this meeting back to order. We left off on our agenda at item 13, unfinished business B, closed session. We've done that. We're now at items for action, or excuse me, C, action item from closed session. Is there anyone who would like to put forth action from the closed session?
I say we accept the contract for the tax abatement act 198, a public acts of 1997, the letter of agreement that was put forth between Norm Fasteners and NJD Development and Bath Charter House.
You have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, now that we have a motion to take action, I'm going to ask our council to just walk us through real briefly in layman's terms for us and everyone, what has changed since the first time we approved this document?
Yeah, so, thank you supervisor. A little bit of backdrop for the public and the board. The board did previously take action on the tax certificate that underlies this abatement previously, also approving all related documents which would go to the state tax commission. As part of that, one of the documents is a letter of agreement and it's an agreement particularly between the individual receiving the benefit of the tax abatement and the township as to obligations for which the township can sort of control the investment and ensure that what was represented in the 198 application will sort of come to fruition. After, the timeline was particularly pushed on the 198 agreement and after it was put in place, we later were notified that the ownership pieces sort of complicated some of the terminology, so what we've sort of presented is a modified letter agreement that will go to the state tax commission and as was presented in the motion, it's actually between Norm Fasteners as well as NJD Development because there is a little bit of a distinction between the ownership and the individual or entity for which you're providing that 198 abatement. So that was clarified in this agreement. And then in addition to that, there was a couple other sort of minor clarifying points on page two, paragraph six. When a PA 198 certificate is filed, there's an application, they attest to the investment they're going to make and the basis upon which you would get, sometimes it's additional personal real property or in this instance also additional positions, people who would then be hired to work at the facility. Those representations were made in the application and we did modify six to ensure that they were fine tuned to reflect what those obligations were that were presented. In addition to that, the way that any agreement typically works, if one of the parties doesn't comply with it, there is a breach process, how you would provide notice. And so in paragraph seven and 11, we did ensure that the parties appreciated how a notice and breach would occur, where there would be notice to the, in this instance, the individual Norm Fasteners would be receiving the certificate or abatement, their opportunity to cure that and then what would sort of be the remedy. And there is a difference in the remedies as to whether they satisfy the employee targets as opposed to other breaches. And then really the only other piece that was modified to come back was just ensuring that if for any reason you did have to go through that remedy process, there's public hearing and some additional procedural obligations before the township board. So we basically clarified a few pieces and made sure that it met the expectations of the parties. I think the IFT agreement got a little bit ahead of LEAP and MEDC who got involved and wanted to make sure the language would satisfy some of the obligations as they were changing. So we're bringing it back to the board this evening for purposes of approval. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or comments now that we have a motion on the floor? All right, with that, I think this is a roll call vote, eh?
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Roscrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Fiosbless?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you to our council and to our staff for continuing to move that project forward and protecting the township along the way. That brings us to the last item on items for action under unfinished business, item D, acceptance of the 2025 budget for the Southern Clinton County Municipal Utilities Authority, SCUMA. We heard from their director last meeting, who walked us through our obligations as part of the budget. If we have further questions, we can direct that to the superintendent, otherwise we can entertain some action on that tonight.
I made the motion to accept the 2025 budget from SCUMA.
I'll support it.
I have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All right, this seems like another roll call vote.
Mr. Roscrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Fiosbless?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you to our council and to our staff for continuing to move that project forward and protecting the township along the way. That brings us to the last item on items for action under unfinished business, item D, acceptance of the 2025 budget for the Southern Clinton County Municipal Utilities Authority, SCUMA. We heard from their director last meeting, who walked us through our obligations as part of the budget. If we have further questions, we can direct that to the superintendent, otherwise we can entertain some action on that tonight.
I made the motion to accept the 2025 budget from SCUMA.
I'll support it.
I have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All right, this seems like another roll call vote.
Mr. Roscrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Fiosbless?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
And for those in the audience, you can look and see the SCUMA proposed budget that we just approved on the documents on demand system at the township website. That brings us to new business, item 14, large A, items for introduction and discussion. We've got a zoning ordinance amendment number 78.01 for land clear cutting. We have the planner here to talk about that and I see our chair of the planning commission is also present, should we need him?
Okay, I know it's been a long meeting so far, so I'll try to be as brief as I can with this. This is a completely new ordinance that the planning department and planning commission is bringing forward to the board tonight for introduction. Largely, I think, I'll try to break this down why we're here. Bath Township is experiencing some commercial growth and overall development in the township. It became apparent to the planning commission that there are certain concerns that come along with that development. I think Ace Hardware would probably be a good example. Development party is interested in a site, so kind of step one for them, even before they've secured zoning approval or even submitted application for a site plan review, is to come into the site and completely clear cut the site. Now, if the development comes to fruition, no harm, no foul, however, as you may or may not be aware, developments don't always come to fruition. So a good example of this could be on, in DeWitt Charter Township on Clark Road, there was that famous eye development, that clear cut, that is 20 to 30 acres and then nothing ever happened, it remains vacant to this day. Loss of vegetation can have drainage runoff, externalities that can be created. Obviously, this is a pretty wet area, not having good retention of water can be problematic for a number of reasons. So, to that concern, this ordinance was crafted in a response to those concerns. What this ordinance does not do, and I think this is a big point that the planning commission would want me to make clear, is that this ordinance does not regulate the trees that a private residential property owner would want to remove from their residential property. What this ordinance does attempt to do is regulate the removal of mass quantities of trees from commercial sites. I'll say this with what my little disclaimer, I always say when we bring forward a new ordinance, we're trying something new in the township. I don't think this ordinance is perfect, I don't think it fixes every loophole or even future loopholes I couldn't envision that a developer might craft to try to get around this ordinance. What it does attempt to do is create an incentive system for the developer to work with the township when they're attempting to clear large swaths of land. And by large swaths of land, we define that as half an acre or more of canopy removal. So we're specific about what we consider clear cutting, what amount that we consider clear cutting to be and how we are going to metrically.
So dry in this weather.
I don't buy those.
Thieves, thieves.
All right, I'm going to recall this meeting back to order. We left off on our agenda at item 13 unfinished business B, closed session. We've done that. We're now at items for action, or excuse me, C, action item from closed session. Is there anyone who would like to put forth action from the closed session?
I say we accept the contract for the tax abatement act 198 of public acts of 1997, the letter of agreement that was put forth between Norm Fasteners and NJD Development and Bath Charter House.
You have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, now that we have a motion to take action, I'm going to ask our council to just walk us through real briefly in layman's terms for us and everyone, what has changed since the first time we approved this document?
Yeah, so, thank you supervisor, a little bit of backdrop for the public and the board. The board did previously take action on the tax certificate that underlies this abatement previously, also approving all related documents which would go to the state tax commission. As part of that, one of the documents is a letter of agreement, and it's an agreement particularly between the individual receiving the benefit of the tax abatement and the township as to obligations for which the township can sort of control the investment and ensure that what was represented in the 198 application will sort of come to fruition. After, the timeline was particularly pushed on the 198 agreement, and after it was put in place, we later were notified that the ownership pieces sort of complicated some of the terminology, so what we've sort of presented is a modified letter agreement that will go to the state tax commission, and as was presented in the motion, it's actually between Norm Fasteners as well as NJD Development, because there is a little bit of a distinction between the ownership and the individual or entity for which you're providing that 198 abatement. So that was clarified in this agreement. And then in addition to that, there was a couple other sort of minor clarifying points on page two, paragraph six. When a PA 198 certificate is filed, there's an application, they attest to the investment they're going to make and the basis upon which you would get, sometimes it's additional personal real property, or in this instance, also additional positions, people who would then be hired to work at the facility. Those representations were made in the application, and we did modify six to ensure that they were fine tuned to reflect what those obligations were that were presented. In addition to that, the way that any agreement typically works, if one of the parties doesn't comply with it, there is a breach process, how you would provide notice. And so in paragraph seven and 11, we did ensure that the parties appreciated how a notice and breach would occur, where there would be notice to the, in this instance, the individual, Norm Fasteners, would be receiving the certificate or abatement, their opportunity to cure that, and then what would sort of be the remedy. And there is a difference in the remedies as to whether they satisfy the employee targets as opposed to other breaches. And then really the only other piece that was modified to come back was just ensuring that if for any reason you did have to go through that remedy process, there's public hearing and some additional procedural obligations before the township board. So we basically clarified a few pieces and made sure that it met the expectations of the parties. I think the IFT agreement got a little bit ahead of LEAP and MEDC who got involved and wanted to make sure the language would satisfy some of the obligations as they were changing. So we're bringing it back to the board this evening for purposes of approval. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or comments now that we have a motion on the floor? All right, with that, I think this is a roll call vote, eh?
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you to our council and to our staff for continuing to move that project forward and protecting the township along the way. That brings us to the last item on items for action under unfinished business, item D, acceptance of the 2025 budget for the Southern Clinton County Municipal Utilities Authority, SCUMA. We heard from their director last meeting, who walked us through our obligations as part of the budget. If we have further questions, we can direct that to the superintendent, otherwise we can entertain some action on that tonight.
I made the motion to accept the 2025 budget from SCUMA.
I'll support it.
I have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All right, this seems like another roll call vote.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
And for those in the audience, you can look and see the SCUMA proposed budget that we just approved on the documents on demand system at the township website. That brings us to new business, item 14, large A, items for introduction and discussion. We've got a zoning ordinance amendment number 78.01 for land clear cutting. We have the planner here to talk about that, and I see our chair of the planning commission is also present, should we need him.
Okay, I know it's been a long meeting so far, so I'll try to be as brief as I can with this. This is a completely new ordinance that the planning department and planning commission is bringing forward to the board tonight for introduction. Largely, I think, I'll try to break this down why we're here. Bath Township is experiencing some commercial growth and overall development in the township. It became apparent to the planning commission that there are certain concerns that come along with that development. I think Ace Hardware would probably be a good example. Development party is interested in a site, so kind of step one for them, even before they've secured zoning approval or even submitted an application for a site plan review, is to come into the site and completely clear cut the site. Now, if the development comes to fruition, no harm, no foul. However, as you may or may not be aware, developments don't always come to fruition. So a good example of this could be on, in DeWitt Charter Township, on Clark Road, there was that famous eye development, that clear cut, that is 20 to 30 acres, and then nothing ever happened, it remains vacant to this day. Loss of vegetation can have drainage runoff, externalities that can be created. Obviously, this is a pretty wet area, not having good retention of water can be problematic for a number of reasons. So, to that concern, this ordinance was crafted in a response to those concerns. What this ordinance does not do, and I think this is a big point that the planning commission would want me to make clear, is that this ordinance does not regulate the trees that a private residential property owner would want to remove from their residential property. What this ordinance does attempt to do is regulate the removal of mass quantities of trees from commercial sites. I'll say this with what my little disclaimer, I always say when we bring forward a new ordinance, we're trying something new in the township. I don't think this ordinance is perfect, I don't think it fixes every loophole or even future loopholes I couldn't envision that a developer might craft to try to get around this ordinance. What it does attempt to do is create an incentive system for the developer to work with the township when they're attempting to clear large swaths of land, and by large swaths of land, we define that as half an acre or more of canopy removal. So we're specific about what we consider clear cutting, what amount that we consider clear cutting to be, and how we are going to metrically measure clear cutting activities. And then what we've also done is, let's say a developer just happens through the ignorances of our ordinance, clear cut a property, and there needs to be an enforcement process. We've given two different paths for that enforcement to take place, that enforcement can take place in a monetary means. We've also given the option for the planning commission to use a tool of just having them reseed the property, because if the whole incentive and whole purpose of this ordinance is just to have land cover, then, you know, the intent of this ordinance isn't to make more additional funds off these developers, the intent is to have ground covered. So giving them the ability to reseed satisfies the ordinance. And hopefully creates that incentive system for the developer to opt into this process and not try to circumvent it.
Are you ready for questions? More comments?
A question.
Oh, go ahead.
It's my understanding this wasn't a unanimous vote at the planning commission. Can you indicate what some of the concerns might have been?
Yeah, for sure. As is often, this is a community with different incentives. Our planning commission, I think, does a fairly well job of representing the different incentive structures in the township. The incentive structure for somebody living in White Hills is going to be quite different than the incentive structure for a farmer in the northern part of the township. There are just some principal stances on property rights within the planning commission, and that's a fine line that, you know, as a planning commission and a planner myself, we're always trying to thread that needle of creating good outcomes for the township, but also respecting the property rights of private citizens. So, yeah, it was just a stance on property rights, they just didn't want to dictate how or what somebody can do with their property.
But this is coming to us as recommended by the planning commission?
It is, by majority vote, it was recommended.
Can you tell us what that vote breakdown was?
I can remember off the top of your head, I think it was six, one. Six, one.
Six, one, okay. Thank you.
Apologies for not remembering that.
Sharon?
I think it's here, ag land you can do what you want with.
Yes.
Okay.
In terms of the half acre, is that half acre in aggregate of the property, or is it half acre as a chunk?
It'd be half acre in aggregate.
Okay.
So as measured by canopy cover.
Okay.
So again, if a developer, like, a good example would be the property across from Spags was recently cleared, those trees wouldn't equal a half an acre, this ordinance would not apply there, even though that's commercial property and there was clearing activity. It doesn't meet the bar of what this ordinance.
And so the delineation you said between like private residential property owners and commercial, that is as designated by zoning then?
As is classified in assessing.
In assessing, okay. Other questions? Kate, did you want to add anything from the planning commission?
No, we, I think the majority of our, well, we talked about this a number of times, but I think the final time, the majority of the discussion was that half acre and what that means and how we, what a half acre means. But other than that, I think all the other questions were addressed.
Thanks.
Here it states, you're going to have a link, clearing permit. Is there an application fee?
If this, as sometimes happens, once the ordinance passes, it will be on staff to create a process to implement said ordinance. So there were, an application will be established, fees will be established. If the fee schedule is amended anyway, they would have to come back to this body for approval.
Anything else, team? All right, so this, I assume, will come back to us in July and we'll take the appropriate action?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is archaeological project for Bath School Museum. Superintendent, is this where you guys found the documents from 1998 for the other thing?
If I may, while I prepared the materials, the recommendation in the form packet, I would refer to Mr. Peg to then introduce this project to you.
All right.
Hello, everybody. Again, we've met a couple times now, so I appreciate you guys' time and commitment to making the township better. So, I'm here, my name's Chris Hagerman, I'm here representing the Bath School Museum Committee, and here to talk about something that came to light with the recent project from Safe House to School in James Cousins Park. It's pretty well known now that the museum committee is working on trying to get a museum in the James Cousins Park. And what my ask is, is when they were working on the sidewalks, there's one specifically that's going through the south end of James Cousins Park, from Webster Road to Main Street. During the planning of that sidewalk, it was determined that with the use of federal, state grant money, that there was, one of the groups that were involved, they wanted an archaeological dig, so to speak. So what that's called is a desktop review through a company that Clinton County Road Commission, I believe they're the ones that set this up, called Gray and Pape Heritage Management. So what the reasoning for was, to have this archaeological dig was to make sure that there was nothing unknown underneath the surface where that sidewalk was going to be, such as Indian burial ground of some sort, something that shouldn't be there. So what that means is, they do this desktop survey, they determine what has been in this area for, say, 100-plus years, they do their survey, and if necessary, they make a dig along, they shovel dig or however it is they do it, to see what's actually under there. Long story short, this made me start thinking that, well, I have a whole foundation that I need to worry about, and I want to make sure that this isn't going to be a problem should this project go through. So the reason why I bring that up too is, that basically, from what I was told, it delayed the sidewalk project two to three months, which went from being done this summer to being done this fall, possibly in the spring. Being a grant program, we have to spend this money or we lose it, $440,000 that we worked to get for these sidewalks, and this is the one thing that almost made it not possible. So anyways, not wanting to have that happen, should we are able, should we be able to build this museum, I proactively went and spoke to Gray and Pape representatives and said, hey, how would this affect me if I build this museum? What they described is, they would do the desktop review, they would look at, they would look at what's been there for 100 years, just like what they did for the sidewalks. They, what they do is, if they have to do some sort of dig or whatever, they only dig in the affected area, so where we would want this museum. So what they, what they would request from me is to send a map, or not a map, but our plans to them, for them to review where it's going to be. They would look at, like I said, what's been there for the past 100 years or so, and from their determination and their history, research, they would determine that more than likely they would only find what you would expect to find in that area, right? So it's been a school or park for the last 100 years, so they would expect to find stuff you would find in a school or park. Now, another thing that I brought up to them is, okay, so now I have a foundation, I don't know what was put in there. I said, a lot of times they backfill and put debris and stuff in these foundations, because there was a basement in the old school. I said, what happens if we find debris? What happens if we find something covered in asbestos, whatever, something that we have to get rid of? He said, that's something we would expect to find, so that wouldn't be a problem. Does that mean State Department wouldn't ask us to dig anyways and look into further? No, but that's what they would expect to find there. It's when we find something that's not expected. So anyways, what my ask is, is that we have this desktop survey done. Like I said before, they look at maps, our proposed site, they determine what could possibly be there, and it's basically a checkbox for us to have done, so that if this is asked in the future when we try to build this museum there, we can hand it to whatever State Department asks for, and says, hey, we proactively did this, does this help? And it eliminates that two to three month process if we're on a timeline and budget. So anyhow, they said they'd be happy to come in here. This is the same company that did the desktop survey and the dig in the park, they're a Michigan company, they're out of Grayling, is it Grayling or Gaylord? Gaylord, I think, Michigan, let me see, yeah. So I was happy with that. They said to do this desktop survey, it would cost $1,500. Again, this is more of a preemptive strike on our part, to make sure that we're clear and ready and that we have all of our box checked. And so my ask to the committee tonight would be, or the board tonight, would be to help the museum pay for this and pay for the entire $1,500 to have this done. They said that this is something that they could take care of this summer, I would just have to get ahold of them, get all the appropriate documents to them, and they could take care of it for us.
The reason that they can't use the desktop study from the Safe House to Schools is because we're talking about a different physical area of the park?
Right, because they can only do the affected areas.
Okay.
There was at one point talk about doing the entire park, but the county road commission was smart enough to say, nope, affected areas only. And just for information, when they did dig in that affected area where the sidewalk is going, they told me they found gun wrappers and gum wrappers and some bottle caps. So they found what they thought they were going to, which is the whole purpose.
Questions? All right.
Happy to answer anything.
It looks like this is just for introduction discussions, this would come back to us again in July for action. So if folks have questions in between, then I assume they can?
Yep, please email me, call me, whatever. If, yeah, if you have any other information, I believe you guys got the two-page, basically, estimate that they put on there, but they said it's a fixed fee of $1,500, and it explains exactly what they would do, and again, it's a checkbox, and I think it's a good one for us to have. So, all set?
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The date of the next meeting is actually July 17th. Trusty Hager, or not Hagerman, I'm sorry, Hagermans, Kellerman pointed out that I had the wrong date.
Just want to make sure which one's the right.
Where's the wrong day?
It's the 17th. It's the 17th, then I said the 15th. My apologies.
Great. All right, so that brings us to new business items for action, small A, fire department grant application for MiOSHA, MiOSHA, Assistant Fire Chief.
Good evening. So truly what I'm shooting for is to go two for two with grants this year. We were awarded the safety grant from the Michigan participating plan, our cameras have been installed and all that, and luckily we've had nobody to look at footage so far, but it's in. I come tonight because last week I was scrolling through Facebook, and I found MiOSHA had made a post that they had funds that not, or that had not been used for the, one of the grants, the My Wish Grant. I already had planned on applying in October, when the state's new fiscal year started, but with this, it was an opportunity. What we would like to do is apply for the grant, which is a dollar-for-dollar match, to buy all of our members a Anzie or the reflective green Three Seasons Parca, so that obviously days like today, we aren't going to need it, but when it's negative 20 out in the middle of winter and we're on the highway, we have a good winter jacket that A, makes us visible, but also makes our members, ensures the safety of our members. So what we would like to do is use up to $8,000 out of the 205-000-543 line item, which we have $300 the fire department receives from when we applied to the My Fire Equipment Grant last year. So that reimbursement, we would like to use those funds after we apply for this grant, if we get it, to make the purchase, and then the reimbursement from MiOSHA would go back into that fund. Quotes jacket-wise, about $6,700, ticket 30. We're currently rostered at 25. If possible, I would like to get a few more extras that way down the road, if we need to, we have them, but we would like to stay under the $8,000. Any questions for me?
Is this a piece of equipment you have now and you need replacing?
No, we, so we, in the past, we haven't really provided, we provide our firefighters with our turnout coats, but we don't, we have reflective vests, but for winter time, we don't really have winter jackets for our members, so something we'd like to add.
So it's filling a gap. All right, that's helpful, thanks. Other questions? All right, well, our grant policy at the township says before our staff apply for grants, they've got to come to us for permission, that's why this is here in front of us today and why it's an item for action. Are we interested in approving the fire department to apply for this matching grant?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
Kevin, do you think we'll have a problem getting the grant?
Um, I mean, when I saw the post, it was encouraged, they were encouraging fire departments to apply. I have seen, earlier this year, I also saw a post they made, that a department in the metro Detroit area had applied and got the same grant, was able to get their personnel jackets, so that's kind of what sparked my interest. If we don't get it this time, I will be back in October to apply again, so.
But you're asking to spend the money before we get approved?
Yeah, to spend it, and then, well, I'll wait, if we get approved, we'll then spend the money to reimburse them.
Okay, so if you get approved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's good clarification. Other questions? How, you want to do this, is this a voice vote?
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carried, right away. Next up is item 14, large B, small B, donation to Clinton County SOT. This is an item for me, and I'm going to invite Chris Hamilton up to share some thoughts. In your, excuse me, not in your packet, at your desk was a letter we received from Commander Hamilton about funding, asking for funding to support the SOT, Special Operations Team. So I asked him to come and share with us a little bit tonight, and then I've got a proposal for you once he does that. Welcome, sir.
Thank you for having me. Our Clinton County Special Operations Team was developed in 1992, and we became operational in 1993. Since the formation of this team, we've been self-funded. We fund our team through a golf outing. And it's funny, when I go to larger trainings and I try to explain to other team commanders some of our financial troubles and our financial backing, there's always a pause, and they're, wait a second, so you do a golf outing just to supplement what you get? No, our team is funded through a golf outing. And we get a little bit of support from the departments with some uniform purchases, and occasionally some equipment, but when we need new bulletproof vests, that comes down onto the tactical team, and we have to raise money through local businesses every single year to keep our team operational. Over the years that I've been on this team for the past 16 years, we've noticed that our callouts have been increasing, and also the equipment that we need to purchase is also increasing with inflation, and it's becoming very hard for us to sustain an operational level for our tactical team and fill the needs of Clinton County. So this past year, we were called out 14 times, the year before that, we were called out 12 times, the year before that was nine. And just, for instance, there was an incident on Allworth Road where we were out there for 13 hours in four-degree weather, and we had to use gas. And, uh, we had to use gas. When, when we use gas to, um, try and remove a barricaded gunman in a situation like that, it costs thousands of dollars. And that, again, comes from our golf outing. So the, uh, the Gore-Tex that our members were in, um, in that four-degree weather, we purchased through, um, the donations, uh, of our nonprofit. So, uh, we're looking for some support to, um, show that, uh, this, this growing part of Clinton County, uh, this, this required, um, support, um, trying to make it so that, uh, we are able to be, to sustain, uh, the increase in inflation and also, uh, demand for our team. So if there is an opportunity for the township to help, we would greatly appreciate it. And, uh, I think that we can show that it makes our community safer. Um, and, uh, the investment is, uh, not just for Bath Township, but for Clinton County as a whole.
Karen?
Those out there listening and may not be familiar with the team, can you tell me how many members total you have and how many municipalities you represent?
Sure. Uh, there's an opportunity for several different, seven different municipalities to contribute members to the team. Currently, we have, uh, members from Bath Township, DeWitt Township, Clinton County, uh, and, uh, St. John's. So, um, and also DeWitt City. We have opportunities for departments like Ovid and Elsie to contribute members as well. So currently, we have fifteen, uh, operators right now. And, uh, that's, uh, that's a low number for us. We're looking to have, um, interviews and, and tryouts here in the next year.
How many do we have here from Bath represented on the team?
So we have three operators that are on our team currently. Um, we also have, uh, our chaplain, um, John Mo, um, is a member on our team, and he's a civilian on our team. He helps us with, uh, moving some equipment and, um, also, uh, inventory too. So he's our quartermaster as well.
I understand we're currently providing some equipment for our folks, like yourself, who are also on the team, but also perhaps insurance on a vehicle. Is that right?
That is something that we're looking to, uh, to move towards. I was able to, um, acquire a grant for an armored vehicle, and, uh, we were able to pick that up this last year. It's a, uh, a Ford Transit van that's armored up to, uh, to protect our, our operators. So, um, that, yes.
I'm not trying to interrupt. I would just have more information on that. Um, in working with Sergeant Hamilton on that issue, um, I was able to get information from, uh, the David Chapman Agency that that, uh, insurance would add, uh, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars to our liability policy, um, which is a small amount compared to all the other things that we, um, pay to insure with our liability insurance. So that was a proposal that I was going to bring back to you, and I just received that information from Jason Horton.
That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, have you been called out to Bath Township in the recent years?
Yes, sir. Um, most, most notably on Clark Road. I had four of our, uh, tactical team operators pinned down by gunfire, um, with the, uh, the structure fire that took place on, uh, Clark, Clark Road near Watson. Um, that was a, a very volatile situation, and, uh, our team was able to respond. And, uh, we were on scene within fourteen minutes of, uh, officers, the initial officers receiving gunfire that day. Fortunately, we were training, and, um, uh, my, my operators thought it was a, a scenario, but it became very real, very fast for our men. Um, they received, uh, I believe they received medals of honor from, uh, Clinton County this past year for that particular event. Um, this year, we had a, a barricaded subject, uh, in Bath Township where there was a felonious assault that occurred with a knife. And, um, our team was initially deployed as a tactical liaison, which is, uh, we have specially trained operators on our teams, uh, that have advanced training in de-escalation. We can assist road patrol, uh, very quickly and, um, establish containment and isolation for, uh, a critical incident such as that. Um, that incident was resolved by one of our, um, tactical team negotiators, and, uh, it was a peaceful resolution. I, I can go on. I mean, we, um, we've become very, very active. Um, and Clinton, or I'm sorry, Bath Township has definitely benefited from our, uh, our team.
When you're called in, is that the local municipality's police department who makes that call to say, we need you guys?
Yes, so the, the on-ship supervisor will contact me and determine whether or not it's, uh, uh, within the parameters of our, our call-out. And, um, ultimately, it's the, uh, the jurisdiction head that makes the final decision or is designated. Typically, it's, uh, a lieutenant, um, that, that makes that decision for us to start moving, unless it's a, a tactical liaison. Um, I have the ability to deploy, uh, four, uh, tactic, or CIT operators and a tactical commander. And that's been very, very beneficial for, um, our, our municipalities.
Thanks. Brendan, I see your hand up.
I was just wondering about our insurance. The vehicle's in, in their name, I'm assuming. Will our insurance cover that?
So it, it would, uh, require, uh, a transfer to us of title, um, and then we could insure the vehicle.
Okay, and they're willing to do that?
It's sold to you for a dollar.
The real question is, would the board be, be, um, willing to do that once that issue came to this board? Um, I would like to correct, um, our sergeant. I don't think that the SOT team has been, um, of only assistance to Clinton County. I think there's been several instances in other counties of which we've been called out to, to support as well, most notably MSU.
We were the first tactical team on the ground at MSU.
Sorry, I had to correct you.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
Other questions for folks or for, uh, Sergeant Hamilton? Go ahead.
Uh, how much, uh, money are you looking for? What does the other municipalities put into it?
Right now, nothing.
None of them put nothing in?
No, sir.
Oh, how much?
So my annual budget right now is roughly forty-five thousand dollars. And, um, uh, we're, we're looking to try and ease that burden so that our golf outing isn't our, our only source. When we had COVID, um, come through, we couldn't have a golf outing. And then the next year, we kind of had a half of a golf outing. So that really put us in the red. And, um, trying to bounce back from that, we've had tremendous support from, uh, from people in our county. Um, and we're doing okay right now, but, um, you know, it's, uh, it's one rainy day away from not being able to fund our, our emergency tactical team.
Did I understand you, uh, when we spoke, that DeWitt Township was going to put in this year?
Yes, I've, I've heard that, um, uh, DeWitt Township is planning on contributing, uh, ten thousand dollars in a line item, uh, for SOT. And I've also heard that, uh, Clinton County is looking to do the same. I've had meetings with, um, the Elsie, um, City Council, and, um, then also the, um, Supervisors Association too. So trying to, uh, trying to build this right now is, is what we're looking to do. This was meant for, um, a, a means to start our containment team at that time. And, um, I don't think anyone planned on it, um, being funded this way for thirty years. So we've done a great job trying to keep it going, but now it's, uh, um, this is a, a very, uh, important part of Clinton County in keeping people safe.
Al, to answer your question, my suggestion to us tonight is to, uh, put up what would be at max ten thousand dollars along with our peer, uh, communities. Five thousand of it would be guaranteed, and then sort of a matching challenge to five other communities. Should they pitch in, up to a thousand dollars, we would match that, maxed at ten. So not just leveraging our money, but to get some of the smaller communities to pitch in as well so that maybe we can get the, the team off the, the golf outing tour.
So is that your motion?
Uh, it's not my motion. I'm throwing it out there for thoughts. I'm always happy to hear your feedback. I've spoken to Sergeant Hamilton about this, and if you, uh, approve what I have just pitched to you, he and I will work on some communication to the other municipalities to say Bath Township is in, but we want to see you all be in as well.
I would recommend, um, that the motion contain, uh, that the funds are coming from general fund.
Yeah, from the police budget.
It's currently not, uh, it's currently not budgeted, so it would have to, it would have to come from general fund. It's a possibility there would be, and, uh, excess funds available at the end of the year. Um, that's not how I like to budget, so I would recommend that it would be with the statement that they're coming from general fund.
When I spoke to the police chief, he suggested the police budget.
I'm letting you know that it's currently not budgeted for there.
But it's also not budgeted in the general fund.
But you're allocate, you're, you're naming the source of the funds.
Right. And we couldn't name the public safety fund instead?
All of the money that's in the public safety fund is spoken for.
Okay, but don't we end up having like two hundred thousand dollars left every year?
Possibly, but it's, you still need to name the source of the funds for accounting and, and auditing purposes.
But all of the money in the general fund budget is also spoken for.
It, it's-
I don't understand the difference.
You're, you can't say it's coming from public safety because that money currently is budgeted to be spent. If it isn't spent, it's because we're doing a good job and we're, we're holding expenses.
But so is all the money in the general fund.
The general fund fund balance.
Fund balance is what you meant to say.
Sorry.
Got it.
That was the differentiation. I'm so sorry.
Got it.
In my head, it came out.
No, I hear you now. That, now that makes sense to me. You don't think the public safety fund balance, though?
That money has been-
Because there is money in there.
Uh, that, that money is allocated for the police and fire budget as well, currently at this time.
Any extras already been allocated to make up the difference for this year?
Yeah, I mean, either way, it's going to be a budget change, right?
Correct.
So couldn't we just change the public safety fund balance?
You need to name the source of the funds.
I am. The public safety fund balance is what I'm proposing. That would be the source of the funds. I, I guess I'm not following you on what-
Until we have an audit that's available to us to understand what the, the new fund balance amount is, all of the money that's currently in the fund balance for the public safety fund has been allocated.
So we won't know until-
Why is the audit going to be done?
The month, hopefully.
Yeah.
We're supposed to have it within the next two weeks.
Probably, probably in July, the next meeting in July.
And it will come to the border of July.
I mean, the likelihood that we're not ten thousand dollar ahead is like zero, right?
But this is a budget amendment, so I need to understand where the funds are coming from.
But what I'm pitching to you is we're not doing a budget amendment. Now you would bring it back like we have done in the past. We authorize the spending and then you bring back the budget amendments later.
I can do that.
Because then we would know, right?
Correct.
I think it belongs in the public safety budget. That's why I'm pushing back. I think it is a public safety issue.
It would be a general fund fund balance transfer to the public safety fund.
Yeah, but we can do that on the, the backend so that if we wanted to continue doing this year to year, we would park it where it belongs with the public safety.
That's right.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. How do other folks feel about that?
Slightly confused, but-
Yeah. Did you have a question, Sharon?
I'm just curious if the team has a dog.
So we work with K-9 teams. We've worked with MSP's K-9 team. We've worked with Bath Township's and DeWitt's K-9 team over the years. We don't have a K-9 specifically tied to our team. Um, it, it, things get a little complicated when we start adding different specialties like that. Um, when you have a bunch of guys in, uh, in full armor, um, we look like the bite suits that the dogs are used to bite. So, and, um, uh, so it complicates things sometimes with tactics.
They're handy sometimes.
They are, they are. For, uh, for search and rescue, for some of the searching, um, that's where we would predominantly use a, a K-9 out in the field.
Was our dog involved with your team?
Um, Aiko's been involved with some of the, the training. Um, I have, we've had Aiko on a, a perimeter, I believe, at one time. Um, but, uh, he's not a, a regular, um, team member.
Team member, okay.
Yeah, so we listen to.
The other piece about the budget that I should say that the chief said to me is, you know, Ryan, when you put this stuff into a budget, it's rare that it comes out. Uh, so I just wanted to qualify his comments, uh, that he is, I wouldn't say cautioning us, but giving us the flag that, uh, if we want to do this in the future, we should include it in the budget. That would make more sense. Other questions? Other concerns, thoughts, other ideas?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Chris, when did you obtain the van? When, when did you take delivery of that? Do you remember?
It was at the beginning of the year. It was, uh, January, I believe.
Yeah, I think it was in that timeframe. I know I'm going to get pushback from the superintendent on this. Um, but as long as it's been determined what the amount is from the insurance company, can we not just roll that into the decision tonight, the amount, the five that you want to do, and pay the extra on the insurance so that we can get that thing moving? I mean, it's, it's a bulletproof, life-saving van that sat around for six months and has not been used.
I defer to Karen on that. Do you feel like you have the, the information that what we would be voting on would, is enough?
At this time, yes.
Would you want us to authorize that exact amount, or would you want to just authorize, uh, want us to authorize approval of the insurance?
Um, I would like you to authorize approval of the insurance.
Okay, and then we could do the backend?
Yes.
Budget change, okay. Sounds like we can.
I'm good. I'll make that motion then, for both. For the expenditure you wish to give to the team and for the insurance of the van.
So five thousand dollars plus another five thousand dollar matching challenge to five other communities, plus the amount that it would cost.
Yeah, I neglected the five thousand matching challenge, but I think that's a great idea.
I think it's a good insurance for-
Get everybody else trained.
I'll second that.
All right, and that the funding source would be the public safety fund balance, and that if the superintendent needs to move that around, once the audit happens, she can come and tell us to do that.
Is there a timeline on that matching? Within the budget year? Could they wait ten years and then give a thousand dollars, and we have to chip in our thousand dollars? Or is it to the end of the year? Is this just for this year?
Great question.
Are we going to do it every year?
I mean, I think we can only expend things in the current budget year, right?
Yeah.
So I guess December thirty-first, but my goal would be to work with Sergeant Hamilton to move folks quickly.
Yes.
Right.
Other questions?
Do you think you'll have problems with having other municipalities chip in a thousand dollars?
No, I have a list of municipalities that we've had contact with and started other, um, conversations similar to this. So I think there's going to be overwhelming support, especially with some of the incidents that we've been a part of most recently.
I'm going to peer pressure them.
Can I just add one quick thing? I was at a meeting with, um, Sheriff Dush probably three months ago, pretty close. And, Mr. Fuentes was there, and I tried to encourage Mr. Fuentes to put enough money in the sheriff's budget to also contribute some money. So I would hit that hard if either one of you can do that. I think he's been kind of primed for it, so looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Great.
His support's overwhelming. I appreciate you.
All right, other, there's a motion, a second, other discussions or questions? Everyone feel like they've got their head wrapped around what we're doing?
Chris, did you get my money?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
She's waiting for her gift receipt.
The golf outing's a good time, and we'll try and keep that going. It's one of the few times where we get everyone from the county together and show support for law enforcement in, in this way. So love to keep that going as well.
Great. Any other questions? Sounds like a roll call vote is in order.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, challenge a yes.
Thank you, folks. Uh, that brings us to item C, the disposition of sewer funds at the Southern Clinton County Municipal Utilities Authority. Superintendent Hillbrand.
Thank you. Um, I have in your packet tonight a recommendation. This comes to us each year. Um, the money that is left over from the payments that we make to SCUMA comes back to us for a decision to make, and I'm doing this for new members that might not be aware. Um, usually, in the past, we have taken the money back and put it into our sewer fund where we can invest or do other things with it. Um, I spoke to Brad Gersky, the director of SCUMA, and he recommends, basically, with the work that is going on at the sewer plant, as well as the, some of the, um, maintenance and repairs that we may need to do on some of our lift stations, the money probably better suits us to be available in the lift station fund, um, over at SCUMA. And, um, so that is what my recommendation to you tonight is to authorize, um, the deposit of our twenty-twenty-three fund balance into the township's lift station reserve fund at SCUMA.
And that's one hundred sixty-five thousand, sixty-two dollars?
Let me turn the page. I think it is. You are correct.
So sort of a significant amount of money. Questions for the superintendent on, on this option?
We normally, uh, pull it back because we can draw, draw interest on the money, which they don't give us, right?
Um, they invest their funds as well. They do not invest these funds, but I will let you know that. Um, I will come back to you, and I will probably come- you know that. I will come back to you, and I will probably come back to you very soon. We have a couple of generators that will need to be either purchased or significantly repaired, and those can run sixty to eighty thousand dollars. So this money being at my disposal would be helpful, even though I would be coming back to you for a decision on how to use it.
Okay.
Well, folks, how do we feel about this?
Can we make a motion with either money in the fund over there at SCUMA?
I'll second it.
And to be specific, that's moving the funds into our...
They, they will do that on their end, but they will move it into our lift station fund.
Right. So it won't be staying in the current fund. It is moving to a new fund. Is that okay?
Yeah, it's not staying in their fund balance.
I just want to make sure that, that's clear in the motion. All right, we got a motion and a second. Is there other questions?
I just want to verify the motion. It's going to go to the township's lift station reserve fund at the sewer authority.
Correct.
And I'm going to put the dollar amount in the motion also.
One hundred sixty-five thousand and sixty-two dollars.
That's right, Karen. Okay. All right, saying none, we'll do a roll call vote?
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes, thanks. And last item for action, cancellation of board meetings due to elections. Back to the superintendent.
Thank you. Um, I did not come to you with this request lightly. I was able to map out the rest of the meetings for the rest of the year and take a look at the business that needs to be completed. That's been completed in past years and, and things that I know that are on the radar currently. At this time, I would recommend canceling the Board of Trustees' meeting scheduled for August fifth, which is the primary election, and then November fourth, which is the general election. And at this time, I have no recommendation for rescheduling. If I feel in conjunction with the supervisor that there is business that needs to be taken care of, we would come back with the recommendation to add special meetings.
Thank you. This is something that we do every time there's an election, right? This isn't a new precedent we're setting?
No, we've, we've done this in the past. This room is used as precinct one, voting in the community, and so this room usually gets set up the night before, on Monday night, when we would be meeting. And so this really helps expedite our setup process so that we can get down to business the next day.
Karen, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, just that we have more people coming in and voting in here, so if we have the room all set up from like Friday up to Election Day, it really helps. And if the room's set up, currently, we get here at like five fifteen in the morning, so we don't have to ask the DPW guys to get here at four in the morning and then work until the polls are closed. So that would help us.
Feels like keeping people out of here would be a good election integrity piece.
Yes, because people are in here voting and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Questions, thoughts, motions from the group?
I just want to remind everybody, don't forget that our budget usually starts about the first of September, and the early meetings, if we can arrange it that way this year. So we're going to be taking away one of our meeting days. I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just saying that we've got to remember that our budget is coming up.
Yeah, I think there's going to be a proposal from the Finance Committee about the budget process, too, soon.
And that, a move that we cancel those two meetings.
All right, the motion is to cancel the August fifth twenty-four and November fourth twenty-four meetings. Is there a second?
I'll support it.
There's a second by the clerk. Any other discussion? Voice vote on this one?
Okay. Mr. Funes Bliss?
I was going to do a voice. Do you want to do a roll call?
Oh, no, go ahead.
You, no, you tell me. You're the boss. No. Voice vote. Okay. Uh, we'll do a voice vote on this. So all those in favor of the motion to cancel the August fifth and November fourth meeting this year, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So we'll take that off the calendar as well. That brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I would like to thank a lot of people that are sitting in this room tonight. All help make this community a better place to live, and I couldn't do, I do and staff couldn't do what they do without the support of people like them. George Baker, John Reich, Officer Hamilton, Sergeant Hamilton, my apologies, and Chris Hagerman. I can't be out everywhere in the community all the time, so having eyes and ears on the ground, letting me know where there are issues, or on the other side of that, good things happening in the community is, is always great to have on my team. And a lot of people don't realize it, it takes volunteers like them to make this community a better place, so I really appreciate them. Congratulations to SOT. I think this was a good decision tonight. I know they will continue to do the hard work of putting on their golf outing to supplement their, their money, but I think this will help them have a more concrete budget that they can depend on each year, and I hope other municipalities take up the offer and that we are able to match all of that money. A reminder on your agenda, July first meeting is canceled, and then our next meeting will be July seventeenth, 2024. And if you have any questions, I would entertain those now.
Is it the seventeenth or the fifteenth?
Let me check my, let me check my phone. It is July fifteenth.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
So I was saying the right thing. I wrote the wrong thing.
No, that's fine. I just...
So it is a regular Monday, right?
Like cross-checking myself here.
Thank you. If you had not caught that, I would have, I would have continued on with that.
We get two meetings.
Information, yeah. So thank you.
We would have been like, "Where's Jack?"
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for the superintendent? Sounds like no. That brings us, thank you, superintendent. That brings us to item sixteen, which is public statement number two. This is the second time in the meeting where folks in the audience have up to three minutes to talk to the board about any topic. It does not have to be something we talked about tonight, but it still is three minutes. So if anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to share, please step up to the lectern and introduce yourself and have at it. Everyone's looking desperate to get home, so it looks like no. All right, that brings me to board member comments. Oh, someone took my sticky note that tells me where to start. I think, Kate, we're going to start with you. Sorry if you were the first last time.
Um, I don't believe I have any comments. I wish everyone, um, are we meeting then?
Good Fourth of July.
Fourth of July, Independence Day. I don't think we are. So I hope everyone has a nice Independence Day. That's it.
Thanks.
I have nothing.
I just want to mention one last time, then I'm going to stop mentioning it. If folks want to sign up to get automatic notification of board or committee packets or agendas or meetings, they can do so on the township website. It's called Documents on Demand. Go to www.bathtownship.us, and you'll find out how to do that. Anytime any of these committees meet or have a packet, it will get automatically sent to your email. You pick and choose which you want. I think it's very helpful for us to be able to not have to be proactive to go getting the materials. It'll come to you, so you know what's going on. So I welcome folks to do that. I want to do my normal every-two-week Mythbusters. I've been reading a lot about the police and fire millage increase, about talking about the police and fire millage increase would not go to police and fire, and I want to guarantee all of the money in the police and fire millage, the public safety millage, will go to the public safety account. What we will then do as a general fund is stop taking money out of our savings account to cover the gap in the police and fire budgets, to cover the growth we have seen over the years in which the millage was not increased. So I want to be very clear. Legally, ethically, morally, this money can't be used elsewhere, and that's how it will be used should the voters choose to vote that way. If folks have ideas about potential budget cuts, I think the board is very open to receiving ideas, lists from ideas, former board members, current board members, committee members. If folks would like to look at the cut side rather than the revenue side, I know the superintendent's open to that as well. And just my general begging of folks, don't get your information off from Facebook. Call us, ask us the questions. We've got great staff who can, who can answer you. And lastly, have a happy, safe Fourth of July, and be careful with fireworks.
That sounds good. No comment.
Nothing from me.
Nothing here.
All right, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm only adjourned.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned. One minute before nine o'clock, Al.
You're getting better.
No, I actually think I'm getting worse. I don't think we've gone this late yet.
No, we haven't.
Brenda, get some coffee. You want to call me from the road? Three hours, I'll talk to you.
I was going to talk you after the meeting, but it was the fifteenth. She said it was the seventeenth, and you told me the meeting was the fifteenth, so that's what it is. And Jack's in favor of it, huh?
Yes.
Okay.